It's now 6:30. I'd like to call this city council meeting of the city of Menneson to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilor Norchikowski.
Here.
Councilperson Thomas.
Here.
Councilman Nestor.
Present.
Councilman Gregor.
Here.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
Mayor, I note a quorum of five.
Councilwoman, could you lead the prayer, please?
Yeah. Can we all bow our heads, please? Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, for this day, how you just blessed us and watched over us and provided with us, just a beautiful day. We thank you for being with us now as we come together for this council meeting. All those are here, just by us all together in one accord, for the good of the city of Menneson and its residents. Help us, Lord, to have the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to do what is best for the city. God is and lead us and direct us in all things. In Jesus' name we pray and thank you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like for councilpeople to approve the minutes of the previous session. We did pass the minutes out earlier, so maybe we don't have to wait quite so long to do this. Go ahead and make a motion.
Mayor, motion to approve minutes of previous session of March 23rd, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Norchikowski.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for a comment on agenda items only.
Ernest Telegraph is 29 bricks. Did this proclamation by the mayor with Bishop William Bass Jr., what is its intention? I mean, what's it about?
He was relegated to bishop, from pastor to bishop. I'm going to recognize him for that.
Okay, but I thought we had separation of church and state. So we commemorate people of religion, then?
Possibly. We start with a prayer.
The big thing is this, and this ain't no reflection on you, John, but part of city council and why we pay taxes is safety. When there's a big group of 40 kids.
Is this on the agenda?
Huh?
Is this on the agenda? You can talk about the other things at the end of the meeting. Is this, is there questions on the agenda items only?
Well, we're talking about funds, don't we?
We can talk about funds.
But where did the funds go? They go to public safety, don't they?
Do you have questions about the funds?
What portion of the tax amount that we pay goes to public safety?
Quite a bit.
Does anybody, don't give me quite, but how much is it?
There's a report over there, if you didn't pick it up, I would invite you to, because I'm going to talk about it, from the DCTA, and it describes that in pretty good detail.
What, they know how much money you guys are spending on public safety?
Yes.
They do?
Yes. Thank you.
15062, I have the same question. I know you adopted minutes, and the minutes are incorrect the way it was written, and I just wanted you to take it taken care of correctly. If you look under what I said, which you wrote, if not what I said, I said that there's nowhere in that I know of that the tapes, in order to be part of the minutes, that will have to be voted on. And I did say that if the written minutes are legally bound, if they're properly written, and they're not legally written correctly, so that's all I wanted to tell you. So my issue still, it becomes the same one. I think we talked about that just a little bit, but it needs to be corrected.
Thank you.
When you guys vote on it, I don't get it. You guys got to read, but you got to keep in mind what was said.
Thank you. Anybody else with questions on agenda items? I don't believe we have any correspondence. Do we?
No.
At this time, I'd like to ask our solicitor for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. The mayor and I met with the Mon Valley Sewer Authority to work through those final property issues where the EQ tanks going to be located. The authority is preparing the subdivision for that project to move forward. You'll see on tonight's agenda, there is an agenda item requesting approval from council to place 557 Donner Avenue, or the annex building right across the corridor here, out to bid. Worked with Mr. Korpash to finalize those bid specifications. Phase three of the sewer project, the USDA project, is out to bid. I worked with the city engineer as well as Mr. Korpash to get that advertised appropriately. I worked with the code and zoning officer, Mr. Davis, for three applications that were in front of the planning commission. The county demo project still is ongoing, and I've been assisting Morvings identifying some of those properties. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Our city treasurer is running a little bit late. He'll be in shortly, and we'll come back to his report when he does. In the meantime, we'll go on. Our city controller is also out ill today. I have a proclamation that I'd like to make real quick. It's a proclamation recognizing the outstanding service of Bishop William Bass, whereas William Bass was consecrated by Bishop James Foster, Bishop J. Drew Schur, Presiding Bishop of the Church of God in Christ, the General Board, and the General Assembly, and whereas Bishop Bass is exceptionally passionate and understanding for all that have come into his presence, and whereas Bishop Bass came about his passion for the Lord following the footsteps of his well-respected father, who took the time to raise a great family, and whereas Bishop Bass continues to administer comfort to others and transforms their life while maintaining a very busy schedule, and whereas Bishop Bass shares the love of the Lord for the city in which he lives, and whereas Bishop Bass brought a food bank to support families in need, and now therefore I do declare April 15th a celebratory day for Bishop Bass with this proclamation and a day of worship. And witness thereof, I do hereby set my hand to cause the seal office to be affixed this 15th day of April in the year 2023. Ron Moser. At this time, I'd like to kind of just talk a little bit about, in more detail, about some of the things that have been going on this last couple of weeks. It has been a very busy couple of weeks. The people may remember the District, the DCTA, the Distressed Communities Technical Assistance, which is a thing that was provided by HUD. They assigned two teams to us, the PFM and the list group. On the table over there, you'll see some handouts. It is the preliminary assessment that they made of the city of Menneson. And I would invite people to take a look at it. She's going to be here next week, and we'll give a more detailed presentation of it. But there are some interesting things that came about in this. If you take the time to read it, you'll, you'll see several things. First off, the things that are very clear to me is the city is still shrinking. It's been shrinking basically 1.5% in a straight line for the last 15 or 20 years. That has not changed. But concurrent to that, the population's getting older and older. It's gone up in the last eight years from 47 to 49.8 years. That's some interesting specification that says that our young are not staying in town, and we need to figure out a way to change that. There are some economic demographics that they included. Menneson actually has a lower unemployment rate than most of the communities, a lot of the other comparable cities, third-class cities in the county of Westmoreland. We're down to 6.2%, and most of them are up at 7, 8%. Further, it goes on to describe the budget, and the budget is somewhat interesting in that, if you go through it, there's quite a bit to it, and I'm rushing through it very quickly. But, but it does show how the city runs, where we get our money from. The real estate tax, the other revenue, the debt revenue, the, you know, all the unearned income taxes, all those different methods we get our revenue. The bottom line, though, that you really have to understand is there is a declining population, 1.5%. With that, our population's getting older and older. When they get older and older, they're not working quite so much. The unemployment rate drops, maybe artificially because they're, they're going off the employment rolls. So that's, the unemployment rate is somewhat possibly misleading. But the problem is, as that goes down, so does the revenue that funds the city and all that we do. By the same token, our costs are going up, because most of the costs that we have in the city are labor-related. Labor always goes up, inflation, and so forth and so on. There is a point at which, if we continue going on this same path, we're going to crisscross, and there's, that becomes a point of no return. You just simply can't run a city when you don't have the revenue to run the city. So it's critically important that we do something to bring the city, bring the city back to life. That's the reason why we have two groups with the, with the HUD. The first one, the PFM, is the group that does the financial assessment. The second group is the list group. That was previously with Kendra, but Kendra's been replaced by a guy by the name of Ethan Guy, which we met here just the last couple of days. I think he'll do us a good job, too. But they are really here to provide technical assistance for redeveloping the city, to bring in industry, bring in jobs back into the city, bring in, bring in something back to the city. So we have two different groups from HUD that are working with us. I think that they're both very positive. One will help us control our expenses such that we don't get to this crossover point before we have the, the employment to support it, and that's, of course, the primary goal. There's copies of this. Anybody wants to read it, I strongly urge them to do it. If they got any suggestions. Well, let me.
You just said.
No, yeah, let me finish my statement. If you've got any suggestions, she will be here, Vian will be here, the next council meeting, I believe, on the 27th. She'll be here, and you can, if you read this, you'll have, you'll have knowledge to ask her questions, and she'll be able to answer them. Now, the next thing is, let's talk for a second about the demo activities we got going on. There's been a lot going on, if you've paid attention to what's happening around town, and you have to understand how we're paying for this. We've got several different things happening. There's the county art money. This is the money that the county's doing for the demolitions. This is a $10.4 million project that they're doing throughout the county, which they're doing some here. But that's not the only way we're demoing properties. We have CDBG funds that we've done over the course of years that we were demoing properties, primarily in areas where they cannot demo it with the art money. And this includes things like some of the properties on Ross Raver, as an example. On the right side of Ross Raver, they won't pay for, on the left side, they will, as you're going up the hill. So we've got that. Then we have the CFA. The CFA is a county thing. The, the, the CFA is what paid for 500 Donner, 544 Donner, and those properties. Then, on top of that, there is county demo fund. Every time you transfer a piece of property in the county, there's a couple bucks put into a county demo fund. That's what paid for the, the old Mon Valley Independent Building. So there's different sources of funds paying for the demolition of these properties, and that will continue to go on. The art so far has demoed over 20 properties thus far, and as you drive around some of the neighborhoods in these areas, you'll see where they've demoed quite a few properties. They got 300 more to go. To that end, they've, they've scheduled about 26 more properties to go through the judicial process in the court, during the month of July. So there's 26 more properties that they'll get access to do the demos. Now, you have to understand, they can't just demo a piece of property unless they have permission to demo that piece of property. There's only certain ways you can do that. You can have the landowner give you permission, you can own the property, or you can do it through the Act 90, where you basically say that you've, you've got to do it for public health reasons. So to that end, Marvin and our solicitor, our code enforcement and our solicitor, have been working together, putting together lists of properties to do this way. Now, when this occurs, they take the title search, they notify all the lien holders, they mail them certified letters, and they, they have public hearings where they, they review this, and they have the opportunity for the lien holders to speak. They give them another 30 days to do it, and if all of this fails, then we have the ability to demo that property. So they have been pushing about 10 properties into this every week. And it takes a long time, because you've got to do the title search, you've got to do the notification, you've got to do all these public hearings, you've got to do all these things. So it's going to take probably in the neighborhood of 90 days for this to come out the other end. But you do this 10 every week, pretty soon you're going to have on the other end 10 popping out every week. It's going to be massive, and this will be another rejuvenation to it. Thus far, we, excuse me, we've demoed four homes, or excuse me, we scheduled four homes to be demoed that way, and that was a public hearing meet that we had.
CDBG monies.
Using CDBG monies. We're still waiting for the 30-day period for them to respond to their public hearings that we had, but very soon, we will be in a position where we can demo those four homes using CDBG funds. So back to the 500 and 544 Donner buildings for a second. Those were CFA funds. One of the things that perhaps we didn't really understand real well is, is somewhat of an issue in that the CFA funds do not cover the soft cost, the soft cost being the engineering. Furthermore, even if they do cover it, they only cover up to 10%. And our engineering was, for that was particularly high because of all the challenges that we faced, for lack of better description, of when we were doing that property. So what we did is we reached out to our state senator, and our state senator, Kim Ward, has agreed to provide some of her state art money to pay some of the soft funds. And we're in the process of getting that to take care of, care of the engineering that we incurred during that period. I feel for the engineer, because that's been a long time. It's been a year now since we've demoed the 500 Donner building. It's just taken that long to get all these, the funds together to take care of it. But we are diligent trying to work on that. So we're talking about CDBG for just a second. Let's just make sure everybody understands this well. CDBG is Community Development Block Grants. The primary word in that is community. When, every August, September, August, we have these public hearings whereby we have a CDBG hearing. And that is really intended for the public to come to the meeting to tell us what they want the money to do, what do they need done, whether it be whatever the case may be. Only the community can do that.
They come here?
They come here. We hold a public meeting. We, we advertise it. It's usually held right before a council meeting, and we did that last September. We didn't have anybody show up, except for perhaps Delmar and a couple other people. And as such, he wanted some radios. That fits the CDBG requirements quite well, so we put that in the budget, because there was nobody else. Now, we had a second hearing, because you do this twice. Still, nobody showed up to say, this is not what we want to do. And then, after two hearings, we have a council meeting, and we have a resolution that we pass adopting that budget. So that budget has been cast in concrete. Now, we can undo that budget if, if council really wants to do that, but we have to reverse everything that we've done, and it'll be eight months before we have access to the money again. It makes no sense to me. All I'm really stressing is, I urge the community to pay attention, to come forth on August, September, when we have this public hearing, and tell us what you want to do with this money. I would love it if we had so many ideas going forward that council had made a decision of how we want this money spent. So that's really what the goal of this is, and really what I'm really saying is, please, please, come to the meeting with your ideas on, on how you want this money spent. Okay, so as this goes on, I think one of the things that first came up was, okay, so we said we're going to reduce $50,000 worth of radios, and there's no doubt that the fire department needs those radios. They got some radios earlier, I forget the exact number. It was only seven or eight radios with, using art money. These radios are not cheap radios, and this, this $50,000 is going to buy 13, 14 more radios. It's going to buy more radios. They're going to be back again next year, I can promise you this. They need more radios even than that. But nonetheless, it takes more than just simply saying, we need these radios, and here was a place we can buy them, we have to advertise it. We have to make this a public thing by CDBG rules. So hence, there will be a motion airing in a few minutes to advertise that, that process. Last time we were here, we had a guy come in and just talk to us about his company, Patch Management, that patches potholes. He's patched potholes on 70 here close by. There used to be a pothole under the Arnold exit, the overpass. In fact, I hit it with a car one time, and it was very bad. They came in, they fixed it, and so far, it's held up for the last several years. So far, I'm very impressed. But how does that work in Menneson? Now, I pushed the CDBG to see if we could use this money from CDBG to use Patch Management. They say, no, you cannot. CDBG money can only be done for replacing roads, only new roads. It cannot be done for anything that looks like maintenance. Patch management is a maintenance process. Our, our chief financial officer and myself have gotten together, and we put together some ideas that possibly, maybe this is a good way to use some of the city art monies to fix a lot of roads in Menneson. Is it really going to fix the roads? Now, he's going to come in on Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday evening, and Tony and myself will, will take him around town. There's some roads that I want to show him. The bottom of 10th Street where it's so bad, the bottom of 14th Street that's bad, Nash, Leeds, Linaway. Those are just some examples of, of very imprinty. There's some examples of a diversity of type roads. We have concrete roads, we have pavement that's failing, we have brick roads, we have all these different types of roads. Can he do this? Can he convince council that he can fix these roads with his equipment? And that's really what this is about. We want him to come into town, convince us that this is a thing, and then we want to be able to issue him a, a purchase order that says something to the fact of, come in and show us a week how it works. We'll give you some roads. After a week, we'll say, yeah, come back the next week, or you're done. It's just not what we expected. In other words, we want, we're, a lot of the Missouri, you know, show us, prove to us that this is going to work. Now granted, a week is not going to tell you how long it's going to work, but you can look at the quality of his job and determine whether it's going to fix the road where it's acceptable or not. If it can fix things like 10th Street, 14th Street, Nash, Linaway, and some of these streets that are absolutely horrendous, it's a wonderful way to spend some of our art money to fix a lot of roads that we couldn't ordinarily fix. So we're going to be careful, but we're going to look at that.
Hopefully, roads are highly densely populated, too.
Well, at some point, we got to, we got to understand, how do you pick roads? Everybody's going to say, my road in front of my house is the worst road in town, and that's the road that needs to be done. Maybe the DCTA can help us filter this out when it comes to, push comes to shove. But there are some roads that we know that are high-travelled roads that are in bad shape that we can look at, and things, if we're going to start moving money from, from, you know, 10th Street to 3rd Street in order to do 3rd Street, we better make sure that we can do 10th Street well. If we can't do 10th Street well with Patch Management, we need to undo all that we're doing and figure out how we get more money for 3rd Street. There's not enough money there otherwise, but those are the things that we got to work on. So on top of all this, phase three of the sewer project kicked off last week. This week, excuse me, this week. It went out for bid. This is huge. This is huge. Now, bear in mind, we've got phase four, and that's what you see going on in town right now with, with the, the big pipe that's coming down. Those are the big feeder lines that feed into, into the system down here. But what phase three is, is up in the neighborhoods, all the manhole to manhole, making sure that all those lines are working throughout, throughout the city. That is a huge project. That is a $15 million project. That is the reason why we're paying the $27 a month on everybody's sewer bill. That's huge. That kicked off this week. They went out for bids. The bids are due later this month. It has to be, the, the results of the bid have to be approved by USDA, but by this summer, July timeframe, July, August, we're going to be kicking off the project that we've all been waiting for in this city. Major stuff we're going to start happening throughout neighborhoods at that point. Last but not least, we've seen what PNG has done to Schooner and Donner. Schoemaker and Donner. They've ripped up the road, they've made it horrible, they've put on some temporary patches to keep it going because they couldn't put in anything permanent because of weather, it's now getting warm enough. So what can we expect them to do? This is not a city road. This is a PennDOT road. The city has very little that we can say about how these roads are done. PennDOT says that what they will do is they will mill the one lane that they did all their work in and repave the one lane that they did. Now, where they went all the way across the road, I don't know what that means. It's not making me really happy, but we're going to find out, that's a PennDOT thing. They're going to mill the road and put new pavement down. It's likely to be, the new pavement's going to be better than the old pavement, but nonetheless, it's not just curb-to-curb payment like what we require anybody to do on a city road. I don't know what to say about that, but.
Mayor, sorry to interrupt you, I apologize. There are some roads that have been altered from that project. One of them would actually be on 4th Street, where they came in and teared up the road and didn't properly seal it at all, and it's starting to come up. So there are some roads that we can probably hammer them back on, and I think Marvin and that has to keep their foot on the pedal and push them to it, because 4th Street is trash.
Exactly.
They're trash.
Exactly. I, I don't disagree with that at all. So that concludes what I was trying to, just, all the things I've been working on this, this time.
Ron, can I just, you were talking about CFA buildings, like the Valley Independent, right?
Mm-hmm.
What are they going to do, are they going to recede that lot? What are they going to do with finishing that lot where they tore that building down?
Which building?
The Independent. You know, above 80 some hours.
The problem with that building is, they, they, when they did that, there was a water line that went under the basement. That line was busted, and it was flooding water in, into, bottom line, they tore up the road, they fixed, fixed that water link, line. Now they've got to fix that big gaping hole they have in the side of the church. And that, they have issued a contract for that, and the, the material that they're going to fix it with is on backorder. It's going to be another couple of weeks before they're, they have it. Once they have that fixed, then they're going to cede it and finish off their, finish off their work there.
I've seen people ask, I said, so they're getting it, but they still have to do the side of the church. So I just wanted to make sure.
The church is really the problem.
Right, that's what I wanted to make sure, okay. So the, the patch group, do they have, do they have any before-and-after pictures of places they've done, plus how long that, how long it's lasted? It'd be nice if they showed us a picture of something that's, that's really bad, that they fixed it, and how long that road is still looked at.
There's some YouTube videos that, that they have, but the one, the only site that I know of that I've actually physically seen is on 70, right here close to us, on that Arnold exit. Underneath that Arnold exit, they have a thing, a hole, and it was a massive hole that they, they used their fancy machine, they patched. And with I-70 traffic, which is heavy, trucks and everything else, far heavier duty than what we have in the city, it's held up marvelously well. So I, I think there's still a doubt that we have that it's going to be perfect, and that's the reason why we want to do some sort of agreement with them, that they have one week to show us how it really works, and then we decide whether we keep them going or not. And whether or not we can do that within their constraints, I don't know, but it's, it's what we'd like to do.
Is he bringing a truck next week?
No.
I thought we made him bring a truck.
With, well.
That's the whole idea that I was saying.
He would, if, if we, if we give him a contract. That's expensive, moving these trucks around.
How could you give a contract if you're not negotiating?
Well, first off, I want him to convince us that he's going to do the right thing and do.
Well, that's why he has to bring a truck, so he can show us.
Well, when we give him a purchase order, we'll take care of that. I, I can only do what he's willing to do. Okay, well, let's continue on.
Thank you, Mayor Farthing.
Is there any other questions about my, my work I've done this week?
Thank you.
So, word number C?
Um.
Yes.
You have C?
Yeah, on C. Somebody like to make some motions, honey?
I'm going to read them for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the advertisement and request for sealed quotes and accompanying proposals for the city of Menneson Fire Station portable radios for the Menneson volunteer firefighters. The request for proposal and advertisement is included within the meeting packets as exhibit one.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions?
Yeah. These specifications that you're showing here, are these from the municipal chief?
Yes.
Well, I needed to know, thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Motion to approve subdivision plan to separate two single-family residential dwellings in the name of Sharon Kamwinski with properties loaded, located at 419 Onida Street and 7 Dakota Alley in the City of Menneson.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, um, separate into what?
Into two, two properties. One would be 419 Onida, and the other would be Dakota Alley, Alley.
And it's one single lot right now?
Yeah, it's one single lot right now.
And they wanna split it into two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Call the roll.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Aye.
Motion to approve subdivision plan to separate properties in the Kelly and McHugh Plan, Lot Number 134 in the Esther E. Johnson Plan of lots number 4 PBV7, P241, situated in the City of Menneson.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? This is a mouthful. It currently does not have a property ID, just so everybody understands that. It will get one through the county once this occurs.
Where's this located at?
It's over in the Abbey Woods area.
Oh, God.
Okay, call the roll.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Aye.
Motion to approve subdivision plan to combine properties in the Smith Novatine Plan, to be combined with parcel 20 dash 01 dash 05 dash 0 dash 002, to form a single 3.13 acre lot located in the City of Menneson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I'm like, Lena, where is this located?
This is also in the Abbey Woods.
Abbey Plant, okay, Abbey Woods.
Abbey Woods, yeah.
Is that in Novatine?
Yes.
Novatine, you said?
From Los Gravestones Apartments, you go in.
Right, I know, yeah, that Abbey Woods. So you said Novatine, that's what it's called?
Novatine.
Okay, call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Motion to approve the request for sealed bids and advertisements for the sale of the property located at 557 Donner Avenue, Menneson, Pennsylvania, 15062, and for the approval of the appropriate advertising procedures to effectuate this transaction. The request for sealed bids and advertising requests is included within the meeting packets as Exhibit Number 2.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Aye.
Motion to pay the invoice for professional services of A&amp;J On-Lot Services as sewer enforcement officers for the City of Menneson in an amount of $635. This invoice and related items are attached to the meeting agenda materials as Exhibit 3.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Motion to pay the fire escrow insurance balance for Joseph Perry Relative Claim Number 38 dash 41 V0 dash 19W in an amount of $29,108.56. This is a total extra payment of $29,263.56, less the final inspection fee to K2 Engineering, Inc., in an amount of $155. This invoice and related items are attached to the meeting agenda materials as Exhibit 4.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Motion to authorize urban designs to begin the process required to combine the 2021 CDBG allocation for the 10th Street repaving project with the 2022 CDBG allocation for the 3rd Street paving project.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman?
My question is, is this all just pending whether we agree with what they can do with 10th Street?
All I can do is give my word to, that we do that. Yeah, if we don't combine the budget, though, 3rd Street's not gonna get fixed, is all I can also say.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, we had a second.
Okay, sorry.
Call the roll.
Sorry.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Motion to approve the updated body cam policy for the City of Menneson Police Department, which upon approval of council will be submitted to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for review. The updated document is attached to this agenda as Exhibit 5.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to, uh, call upon our CFO to give us his report.
You wanna, you Jerry?
Oh, we got Jerry here now. Jerry, would you like to give your report now?
Oh, absolutely.
Please do so.
Mayor, Council, citizens of Menneson, my report for the month of March 2023. Garbage fees and city real estate taxes collected for the month. Garbage fees revenues, current, March, $25,820. Year-to-date, $320,920. Budget amount, $325,587. Garbage fee delinquent, March, $8,042. Year-to-date, $29,229.24. Budget amount, $80,780. Not collected by Portnoy, which was included in the amount I just read. For March was $5,092.86. Year-to-date, $7,124.86. Penalty and interest for Portnoy, March, $1,941.16. Year-to-date, $2,163.65. Year-to-date, $2,000, budget amount, $2,145. Garbage fees collected for 2024, March, $210. Year-to-date, $755. Budget amount, $1,385. Total for the month, month of March, $41,106.2. Year-to-date, $360,192.75. Budget amount, $409,897. City real estate taxes revenues, March, current, we collect $336,915.5. Year-to-date, $336,915.5. The 2023 budget amount for the following departments are, General Fund will receive $1,409,447.79. Depth Service will receive $380,191.9. Library Fund will receive $40,677.22. And the Parks will receive $191,907.90. For the total, budget amount of $2,013,724. Delinquency taxes, there was nothing collected this month by the city. Year-to-date, $8,673.30. Budget amount, $5,503. Collected by Portnoy, nothing for this year. Collected by West Mountain County Tax Claim Board, nothing for March. Budget, uh, year-to-date, $64,607.39. Budget, uh, budget amount, $167,423. Total taxes collected year-to-date, $410,195.74. Distribution is as follows. As of March 31st, 2023, the General Fund received $240,340.29. Depth Service Center received $65,223.87. Library Fund received $32,271.49. Parks received $7,629.76. For a total of $345,465.41. Real estate transfer taxes, we received $5,307.10 this month. Year-to-date, $20,394.87. Budget amount, $89,333. Earned income tax, March, $99,429.39. Now, that's a typical way I'm there. Okay, the year-to-date, uh, figure on that one is $79,770.58. The budget amount is $513,898. Mercantile tax for March, $794.74. Year-to-date, $839.80. Budget amount, $22,579. Local service tax, March, $3,335.42. Year-to-date, $19,003.8. Budget amount, $53,357. Tax certifications, March, $3,340. Year-to-date, $6,260. Budget amount, $21,940. Municipal lien letters, March, $2,775. Year-to-date, $4,875. Budget amount, $14,775. Line usage fee, unsecured payments in March, $9,147. Year-to-date, $9,471. Line usage fee, March, $69,650.92. Year-to-date, $226,527.60. But, uh, total amount for the year-to-date on line usage account is $235,998.60. Mayor, that concludes my report for the month.
Okay, I believe you need a motion for that?
Mayor, uh, excuse me, sorry. Mayor, uh, motion to accept garbage fees and city, city real estate taxes collected for the month of March 2023, and to expunge the extra decimal earned for income tax on the treasurer's report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Jerry, what's our normal, how do we get most of our taxes? Do we usually have a big portion in by now?
Of what, I can't...
Do we normally have a bigger portion of taxes in by now, or no?
It all depends on the citizens, on when they're paying. They have till the end of April to pay it before the discount. That's when we should have more of a correct figure in at that time. Okay?
Now, I think we're ready for Councilman Anthony Orchowski.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, make a motion to pay the following invoices from the General Fund in the amount of $39,300.95. All invoices are attached to this agenda as Attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Recreation Account in the amount of $1,029.9. All invoices are attached to this agenda as Attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Parks Fund in the amount of $888.74. All invoices are attached to this attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from line usage account in the amount of $34,106.97. All invoices are attached to this agenda as Attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilperson, or, excuse me, Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Grant Fund in the amount of $59,901. All invoices are attached to this agenda as Attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following liquid fuel invoice from the General Fund account in the amount of $22,776.40. This invoice payments will be refunded from the Liquid Fuels account to the General Fund account when funds come, become available. All invoices are attached to this agenda as Attachment F.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the transfer of $77,315.33 from the General Fund to the payroll account to cover payroll expenses.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve a transfer from the General Account to the Healthcare Account in the amount of $3,000.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
And the following balances are, as of today, Art American Rescue has $272,000, $272,566.66. Depth Service has $649,102.91. Fire Escrow has $49,610. Refuge has $369,689.43. Grant Fund has $42,305.64. The General Account still at Community Bank is $19,702.3. Healthcare has $4,909.31. Parks has $37,542.42. Payroll has $6,226.56. Recreation Board has $1,927.91. Line usage has $609,896.5. Liquid Fuels has $3,179.54. And the General Fund has $2,900, $2,900, $295,205. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lewis, would you, could you, your report?
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna defer reading the Streets and Library Report until our next meeting, but I do, um, just to remind everyone that we are having our spring community city cleanup next Saturday, April 22nd, from 9 to 1. The meeting place will be located at Knight Street Park. Well, the park is actually in really good condition, but we will be focusing on the surrounding areas of the park. Uh, we will have a lot of other groups participating. We will have students from, um, Seton Hill College. We will have, um, the Youth Commission. We will have the Nehemiah Project. We will have the NAACP, and also some workers from Pittsburgh that will be also coming to help us with the city cleanup. Um, but I also would like to, um, read a special commendation note for the fire companies of the City of Menneson from Menneson resident John Civic. This was sent to me on Monday, March 27th, 2023. Said, "My name is John Civic. I own the Turner Building on the corner of Donner and 2nd Street. I recently had a fire on my roof at 50 feet up. The firemen were remarkable. Not only did they put out the fire fast, they were careful to do as little damage as possible, even after my telling them not to worry about the damage just to get the fire out. The minute Delmar Heppel thought I could get in there safely and cover all the expensive music equipment, he sent me in with some firemen to cover it with their tarps. To be in there and watch those young firemen drag those large fire hoses of three flights of stairs, 40 feet up to the top floor, was forty feet up to the top floor, was amazing. You see how dangerous of a job that is? I hope no one has experienced that, but be glad that they are there for you. I want to say thank you to all the fire stations that were there. I don't want to name them for fear of leaving anyone out. Just know we have the best in the Mon Valley. They kept the damage to no other than the overhang. The only interior damage was three mini lampshades, most of you see in the windows. Thank you once again, John Civic."
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir. Oh, just one other thing, I forgot to tell you also. The Salvation Army will be providing continental breakfast and pizza once again after the cleanup, like they did last year.
Just, just to be perfectly clear, that's not this Saturday, it's a week from Saturday. It's the twenty-second, twenty-second, two-two.
At one o'clock, right?
At nine o'clock.
Nine to one, nine to one.
Nine o'clock.
You'll be late, you'll be late, yes. Yes, bright and early, bright and early.
Okay, excellent. Okay, Councilman Nestor, would you like to give us your report?
Uh, thank you, Honorable Mayor, uh, members of council, administrative staff, rail officers, and the citizens of Manassas. I will be giving my report, um, at the next council meeting. I just want to give a touch-up that I've been working with the coenforcement officer on some of the properties that were questioning in today's agenda. Uh, been working with the city administrator on certain projects that I want to see going forward, and working with getting some defibrillators in certain areas of the spots of the city's, uh, buildings that we own. And, um, spoke to a citizen too. Um, I'll work with Councilman Thomas on this, Councilman Thomas on this, about, uh, putting a stop sign somewhere in a location. Unfortunately, I'm not able to remember on top of my head where at, so I'll, I'll work. Yeah, and, um, other than that, Mayor, that's all I have, so I'll, I'll yield the floor. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Councilman Gregor, would you like to give us your report, please?
Uh, I'll defer to the next, uh, meeting. However, I do have a comment about the situation up at the Hilltop Fire Station, where the threshold has rotted out, or it was never installed, and the rodents are coming in. I understand that we had someone come in today. Mike, is that correct?
I thought someone had already come in to look at the...
Was that today or the other day?
Wasn't today, that I know, yeah.
Marv?
The rodent guy was today, he got the report.
Oh, with that part, yes, okay, but not the...
Okay, now, I, I have an understanding that that guy can also replace the threshold.
That, okay, I will check that with Marv.
Forward that to Marvin?
Yep.
I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
I mean, if he can, might as well just get it done, that'll eliminate the, uh, access to the building.
Okay.
And outside of that, that's all I have for today.
Very good. Well, at this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on any item that you deem appropriate.
Okay. This isn't a reflection on anybody.
No, I know about that, him being...
We're talking about concepts. We pay taxes to the city. To do what? To provide us with sanitation, streets...
Protection.
Garbage collections, water, et cetera. But the number-one problem that isn't being addressed is public safety. Out of the three public safety, more or less, institutions we have, you have the police, the firemen, and the emergency, uh, ambulance. So far, the, the only institution that outshines the other two is the fire department. Now, when we're talking about public safety, just like the roads, where is our money going? You keep asking, or you keep playing around with, we're going to get funds from here, funds for there to take care of our local roads. What are we doing with our property taxes that we're paying? That's part of the package. And that's why I asked in the beginning, what is the percentage? And don't deflect me to, it's in some paper over there, uh, on the file. That's what the school board does all the time, and nobody knows nothing, okay? The problem is, how much, and you people, if you don't have a handle on how much money goes to public safety...
Twenty-four percent.
Twenty-four percent, okay. Now, with twenty-four percent, and then I want to go to the roads.
That's the active officers.
Uh, uh, okay.
Twenty-three percent to retire.
So, what's the total?
Well, the total is a total of forty-seven percent.
Forty-seven, so half of our budget goes to the, uh, police?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so where's the public safety? Whenever forty people, uh, kids get together at any, in fact, they got together on Easter Sunday evening, okay? Now, what happens if there was a family walking by, or elderly? So, what happened? The, the only person that got caught was somebody who attacked a police officer. Who were the ringleaders? Because if you didn't prosecute the ringleaders, it's going to happen again. Simple as that.
When did this happen, Ernie?
Sunday night, on Easter.
You think the police might still be looking into it?
I don't think so. They arrested one person, and they're going to make a big deal out of that. That they put a fifty thousand dollar bond on one, on one girl, okay? But the ringleaders that started this fight, they're out free, walking around. And if they got away with it this time, they're going to get away with it next time. Uh, the other thing is the roads. You guys keep looking for money for roads. What percentage, now, you told me forty-seven percent goes to public safety. What percentage of our taxes go to our roads?
For the last, at least fourteen years, and probably much longer, absolutely zero.
Zero, so why? Why is it zero? What are you guys doing to correct that?
Well, first off, is pay all the other bills. We've got Parks money, we got to spend, transfer the debt service, we got to pay the, the, all these different fees. There's just only so much money to go around.
Yeah, well, you got to allot something, because that's part of your primary duties...
For the last...
For operating the city's budget.
That's one of the problems, absolutely. We don't have enough money in the city to do all that we need to do.
Okay, well, maybe you should save some of the money instead of knocking down all these buildings and making a prairie land, because what you're doing is you're just beautifying cosmetically the city. And you want to know why the, uh, the curve...
How much money did we spend on knocking down buildings? Zero.
Well, how much money do you spend bringing economy forces in this time? And I'm not talking about advisors. You're talking about two advisors are going to come and they're going to tell us their baloney of how we're going to improve.
How would you go about it, Ernie?
Huh?
Tell me, tell me your plan to go about it.
Okay, first of all...
How would you do it?
First of all, we got to have a commission. If we're not going to have a chamber of commerce, a commission to market the city. I've been talking about it for years, in, in three different administrations. And, and, and I keep getting angry.
I've told you to go do it.
Uh, listen, when I go do it, people are so brainwashed to say, what authority do you have? So, if I don't have recognition from the council, what am I doing? I'm pissing in the wind, what are you doing?
Ernie.
Let's be...
Let me ask you a question, Ernie.
Let's be realistic about it.
Ernie, let me ask you a question. Is there a chamber of commerce right now?
No.
Start one. Don't, don't, don't tell me...
Is the city going to recognize it?
We have to, if you start it...
If you get one going, and you got members, then it'll get, of course it will.
Excuse me, I thought we already had one.
No.
No, no.
We've tried many times.
They tried, but, uh, they dissolved it. And you can't, you can't beat a dead caucus back to life. It's dead, and it has a bad reputation.
We're not doing that, though, yeah.
Yeah.
Remember, we talked about starting a business association of interested men and women in the city.
Listen, organizations don't do it. We need employers, that's what we need.
We know that, Ernie, and you know that that's happening with the grouping that we're putting together, you know that.
Uh, listen, all you got is groups, and most of these groups, you know what they're waiting for? Payday. Whenever you guys do get some money, they want a cut for their organization. Uh, I don't want to be surrounded by those people.
Okay, anything else?
Thanks.
Yeah, one more thing. Is anybody looking into that, uh, ambulance?
Yes.
Okay, what, what did you discover?
We've been running lots of statistics on it, we've got some numbers. So far, it looks like they're doing a pretty good job.
It, it ain't solvent? That's what I want to know, not about if they're doing a good job. They solvent?
Well, they're in business, they're responding calls, they must be solvent.
Don't you think you could go and ask them?
You want me to go ask them? Okay, I'll go ask them, and I'll, I'll give you an answer at the next meeting. Hmm?
If they're a nonprofit, you should be able to look up their balances online.
Well, I'll go in and ask them, and then I'll bring you a report next time.
There you go.
Now, this is the big thing here. You guys got to be focused on prosperity, okay? You just knocking down buildings, it, it's just a small step. You, if you're going to take something out, you have to plant something in its place.
Absolutely.
And we're not doing that.
Oh, we're trying hard.
How are you trying? You're not talking to employers.
Just as an example, and I don't want to taint this, but going to lunch this past week, there's a guy out taking pictures of the vacant lot around five hundred dollar. I start to talk to this gentleman, "What are you doing here?" Well, he happens to be a consultant that reports to Sheets, and they're looking at putting a Sheetz there. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but I'm saying that there are people coming into town that are looking at doing different things. Maybe it will, maybe it won't.
Yeah, but we're not going to wait until some fly-by person that you catch on a wing.
Sheets is not a fly-by person.
The person, this, all these corporations got all these people, like, uh, grooming the whole countryside, looking to see if there's a possibility of, that doesn't say nothing. They may have fifty, uh, people out there, bringing in fifty reports, and they might act on one.
You're right.
Yeah, so what are we doing? We're going to wait for that one?
So, I'm going to say, "Don't come look at our property here, we don't want you over here, we don't trust you."
I'm not saying that.
Well, okay.
I, I'm not saying, you're putting words in my mouth.
No, you're, you're trying to say, put something forth, that we're doing our best that we can. There's only so much things that a city can do.
You're doing it with government agencies, you're not doing it with employers.
Let me explain something for a second. There's only so much that a city can do. We can make it look as, as safe as it possibly can. We can provide parks, we can provide police, we can provide all the infrastructure, and we're trying to do that. We're trying to clean up the city to make it presentable. That's the things a city can do. The city can also do certain things with tax, taxes, but as far as investing in, in something, you can't do that. That's not what a city can do, that's just beyond...
Wouldn't investing, you cannot do investing?
We can't go out and take somebody out to dinner and say, "Come, come here."
I didn't tell you to bribe people.
Well, I'm just saying that we're doing everything we can to entice it, to make these people come in to look at us.
Look.
And we've got a plan to put together for some people to do this.
I don't know if you guys know this or not. The dollar's going down, and there's already thirty-two countries that are going to eliminate the petrol dollar. When that happens, our dollar's going to be worth five hundred percent less than what is worth now. What's that going to do to all your plants? You're over there, uh, thinking you need this amount of money to pay for this, it's all going to blow up.
Okay.
People, people every day can't afford the, uh, prices that keep going up, and it's going to affect you people.
I understand, thank you.
Yeah, well, we have to bring an economy...
I agree, nobody's, nobody's arguing that. And, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have several questions, my name is Pino, I'm five oh sixty. Uh, one goes to you, was, uh, would you come up with, did you talk to the, uh...
I haven't talked, I know you're talking about the garage, no, I haven't.
The parking?
No, not right now. Right now, we got, there's so much that I'm, I'm focused on right now, but I understand it.
The POW flag, they're supposed to go up Ninth Street, I guess it's going to get started, right?
The POW flag, you mean the mural?
The mural, yeah.
Oh, yeah, with the contracts, they're drawing up now, so that's going to be part of the new mural, right? They're drawing up their contract now, yeah.
There was something else that I had to bring, it blew my mind. Uh, I, I think there's a conflict between church and us, the city. You know, I want to bring that up nice and clear.
Okay.
Uh, if you meet with Nehemiah, or whatever that group is, it shouldn't be met at the church coffee shop, which is your church. And it's taken there directly to take care of your business, but that's about it, not to take care of my business. I like to go to my church when I go, and that's it. But I don't have to be drawn into some place that pays no taxes, and you draw up their business. I think that's really terrible on your part, yeah. Then the other part that I wanted to bring up was like, you mentioned Sheets. Sheets, to put up a Sheetz, it takes seven acres of ground. Do you have seven acres? Because they don't put nothing under seven acres. The reason I know that, because we sold the one, two acres, where they were allowed to do it in two acres in Monongahela. I played a part in it. All I'm saying, it takes seven acres, so do you have seven acres?
Not there, but who knows? I don't know, I don't have the answer for you.
And last but not least, to me, this is important. The garbage authority still miss one person.
We've advertised for that person.
Oh, you, you put people where you want to. But the other part of it is, that the city of Manassas, in Monongahela, I mean, in, uh, Valverne, they're the only one that can raise the prices, the rates on the garbage. It's not the authority. The authority just tries to take care of the business, there's the contract. They've raised it twice. You guys raised it once, and then you guys agree on the five dollars letter that went out to pick up additional trash. And you understand that, right?
I understand what you're saying.
You understand that, that that's the way it works. You guys can raise the...
We have, we, we raised it to pay the...
You already done it twice.
We've done it once, but, but that is to meet the increase in price that the contract called for this year.
Okay, and last but not least, the stop sign on Fifth Street. It's been six months since I last brought it up. We need to, supposed to meet with PennDOT. Now, what we doing this, sometime this decade or the next decade?
We've met with that, with PennDOT.
Pardon?
We have met with PennDOT.
Yeah, I mean, how long's it take?
PennDOT did not mandate any changes.
So, how long's it take to meet with them?
We have met with them, that has happened.
Oh, is it placed already?
Yes.
Well, he said that we have not met with them.
Not the citizens' meeting, we, we've had a meeting with them, Pino, to get it moving, but I said to you when we talked before the meeting, we want to have a meeting with the secretary to come in and talk all the overreaching issues.
But I thought we were going to play a part in it.
You are, you're going to be in that meeting. We just had a preliminary...
Which meeting?
A citizens' meeting with PennDOT to talk all of the issues that we, we mentioned, third, fifth.
All I want to talk right now is about the stock stock.
All right.
Right there.
Okay. And that's on the agenda.
And if you guys aren't ready to meet, then don't BS me.
No, no, it's, we met on issues, but we want them in.
Just don't BS me, man.
Not BSing.
Because I'll be on your case from here till the end.
Yeah. We want to have that meeting that I told you about before this session.
And as far as what you were talking about, the pothole, and you and him are going to meet, what do we fall in it? Because I think that's a joke. That guy gives you a three-month warranty on it. Three months warranty, after three months, you're stuck. Now, if he bought you a dinner, which I don't know, maybe he did, you know? Maybe you sold yourself cheap, that's all I can say. Maybe you sold yourself cheap. That's all I could tell you. Because definitely, there's no need for them to do blacktop in this area the way they're saying it is, especially when he tells you through your face, "We only guarantee you three months."
Which is more than we get on a new paved road.
Pardon?
I'll have to ask the engineer what we get on any road for warranty. I don't know.
You're saying you have to ask an engineer. Are you an engineer?
A different kind.
Are you an engineer?
Yes.
So what do you think? You think three months is good enough?
I think three months for a warranty is a warrant... Three-month warranty. That's all I can say.
Is that good enough on a pothole?
I don't know.
Well, you should though. God damn, you can't be that damn stupid.
Okay, never mind. I can promise you, one, there's gonna be a full demonstration where people will know. Two, we're going to ask other municipalities, cities, references, and anything before I even let them spend a penny. Nothing's gonna happen, not unless it is exactly as they say it is. And we will find out if is three months blowing smoke up our butts.
Well, I went to the website like McGregor told me to do that one night, right? And when you look at it, there was nothing there solid. And they're from the east part of our state. It will cost you that much money just to get them over here.
Did you... When you went online?
Yeah.
You saw... Did you see the city, the mayor, talking?
Yeah.
Did you contact the city?
Did he talk about what?
Did you contact the city and ask them? You want references, right?
No, but he basically said that they were gonna try it out.
Oh, no, no. They were bringing back two trucks this year, because last year, they'd done so much with just the one truck. Now, this year, they were gonna bring in two trucks. There's also on that video, you can contact that city. You can contact that mayor, and you can ask him.
How about that station Channel Seven that did the reporting of?
That was interesting, yeah. But if you wanna talk about longevity in a city, why don't you contact the mayor?
If that's the route you're going, that's fine, okay? But it ain't gonna be cheap, and if it takes a dinner to take you out or a game to take you to, and that's the route you wanna go, knock yourself out. But we're gonna be watching you, that's all I'm telling you. But I think he should be brought up in a meeting other than what he did the other day. You know what the numbers are. You know what the cost is. It's a big... Don't wanna tell us. He didn't wanna tell us. He said he had to talk to you. Did he tell you the numbers?
Okay.
Did he tell you the numbers?
Yes, we have a quote from him. We have a quote. We asked him what he could do for $175,000, and he said he can provide 175 tons of potholes. How much will 175 tons of potholes fill? I don't know. That's a... Potholes are...
That's almost like fifteen truckloads.
Well, consider that Third Street, from the Third Street Extension to Schoonmaker to replace that road is right at $200,000. That's one road, one little piece of road. To the Third Street Extension.
Keep it in perspective something, okay? And I'm not saying this is the best thing since sliced bread. We don't know that.
We're just trying to figure that.
We might look at seventeen other different things, and I have no clue. But remember the daunting task, just like any town, to try to fix the potholes in the roads. Look at the city of Pittsburgh. Look anywhere else, and I'm not blowing that off that we're worse or better than they are. But the cost value, and you're always very hard on the cost values, okay? Remember, a year or two ago, before the sewage project kicked off, I asked Tony Vitell to give me a cost estimate of what it would cost once they do the sewer project, which is almost everywhere in town, right? Okay? And instead of patching it and doing it, milling it, doing the whole road, curb to curb, after they come through and instead of putting the pipe in like we went with, no, we went with the cement to do the veins, okay? This was laying new pipe, brand-new, digging up the roads and doing it all. Do you remember what the cost was? $115 million.
Look.
And that would've gave every city...
You went to your engineer, right?
I'm sorry?
Why don't you go to the company that does that for a living and give you a price? That doesn't cost anything.
I went to our engineer who quoted the price of somebody that, like Morneck and them, that would turn around and do the job after the pipe company did their job.
All I'm saying to you is there are blacktop companies you could call from New York Town that they do... They work for PennDOT all day long, and also right here in Chalroy, and also down here in Donora, to give you a price on a one-mile basis. They'll give you a price. You don't have to go. They'll do the milling and they'll do the two curves. But that's the only way. If you go to your engineers to give you a price, that's shortcutting.
I believe Dawn said it right a couple meetings ago.
Yeah, I heard him say that.
One mile is about a million dollars.
I was quoting the price for 400 grand, opposite of what he said. He said it'd take a million dollars a mile. Am I correct?
That is correct.
400,000, I gotta quote.
To do what?
To do what?
To do what? To do what? To mill it down, put a new base and a new seal?
Coming down, looking at it, doing the milling, and then doing the one rough cut.
On what? One rough cut, okay.
Not the final fine cut, but the rough cut is pretty dangerous.
$400,000.
Yeah.
So if you... If you put the top on it, what's that gonna additional charge? If you do it right, if you do it right, what's it gonna cost? Not 400 grand.
$600,000.
Okay, so let's just for giggles, real quick. Look at Dawn's... Wait a minute.
It's a hell of a benefit to get a price.
Look at Dawn's figure, and let's look at your figure, and let's split it into 650.
Forget about my figure than his figure. Get a price.
The point is, there's what? Is there... Is it 43 miles in this town?
Chief, how many miles of road in Menneson? Forty-three to... How much? Forty-three, forty-seven miles of road to do.
You're not gonna do them all. You know which one needs to be done the most. All I'm saying is, instead of going to each one, I said you go to an engineer. You go to the company that does it. Don't give you a quote. Don't come over and look and give you a price.
The point we're trying to make is, we can't do 43 miles of road at $600,000 a mile. Nobody can.
I agree with you.
We're going to look at everybody that does something like this to see where we can get our biggest bang for the buck, so it covers the almost... Most of the citizens in this town. Because 10 to 1, and we've all heard it, people are tired of blowing out a tire, knocking out a front end, doing everything. They're sick and tired of it. That is the number-one thing. And if I had money in a budget to do all the streets, I wish I could.
But you can't do all the streets.
I can't do five streets. I can't do one street.
You could schedule them one at a time. You know, 20 years from now, I'd be dead and buried, so would you.
20 years from now?
Okay. Where do you get to 600,000? Where do you get to... Let's go with the 400,000. In the budget right now, where do you get 400,000?
I don't know, but where do you get 170 to do potholes that only last for three months?
Is that...
Well, I mean, that's what he said.
That's... No, that was a guarantee.
There's a difference.
They will come back in 90 days. If it blows out, they'll come back and fix it in 90 days.
They come back in 90 days from eastern part of the country. I believe in what I said. That's all I gotta do. All I'm saying is, if you get a price, and it don't matter where they give you a price, whether it's from New York Town, whether it's from Donora Blacktop, or whether it's Chalroy Blacktop, they'll come up and give you a price by the mile, and then you go from there. If you want one mile down, two miles down, or five miles down, it's up to you guys.
And that changes three times a year. That changes three times a year. You do know that.
Yes.
If you don't bid it in the winter for the coming spring, when they're looking for business, you won't get the same price as you would now because they're booked.
Because in the wintertime, it costs more to get blacktop done in the wintertime because of the weather. And it's not because of the weather, if you think. It's because of the material that they put on the... It cuts back 200 off more than it's...
He was. I don't know. Thank you.
You know, one thing I think we're trying to do, Pino, is we know we don't have a half a million to do a road a year. But here's the thing. What we're trying to do is, we have so much left of the ARBA money. So we wanna try to use that ARBA money to benefit as many people as possible. And if we can help, even if it's only for a year, that's a year's worth that those people are going in and off their streets without tearing up their cars. And by then, in a year, maybe we have a business, a large business in here. Maybe we have something else. But if we can help somebody just for the use of this good ARBA money that we have left, you know, it's gonna benefit the people for even a year.
I hope you enjoy the ballgame in the desert.
Thank you.
Hi, Ed Lefebvre on Keystone Drive. Just a brief comment. Since I haven't seen a budget for the year, I wanna ask this question. Does the city actually offer quarterly reports of what comes in and what goes out? For example, I'm interested in money. I'm interested, like, in my budget at home.
Well, every single council meeting, we tell you what we have in the banks and all the money we spent.
No, I'm just asking you, does the city operate, like, supply its citizens with, let's say, how you're doing, a quarterly report? You know what's coming in, what's going out quarterly?
We do it twice a month. Where have you been? We do it twice a month. I just gave a report tonight that gave you a...
No, I understand that. You know, don't jump on me.
But you're asking for...
No, don't jump on me.
No, you're asking for something that we do.
No, I'm asking for a summary every quarter. Money comes in. It's... In other words, you're telling me monthly, well, put it in a quarterly report so I can see figures.
Can't you see figures monthly?
I... No.
Why?
Because I can't keep track that way. If I have a quarterly report, a quarterly report, I can actually see the actual figures by the month, and I can compare what the city has taken in and what the city is putting out. Most... I think most businesses offer a quarterly report, so why is that so unusual?
The treasurer gave a report tonight.
I would like to see quarterly reports.
One of the things that we've got is the DCTA, the PFM Group, and that's really what they're here gonna be doing for us, is helping us come over and approve our reporting.
Here's my other question, connected with my idea of a quarterly report for the city. You're mentioning outfits like the CDBG, ARP, CFA. I'd like to see when that money comes in, and I'd like to see when that money goes out and what it goes out on. You know, my budget at home, I know what comes in, but some things come up that cost more, so I sort of shove it into the next month. I just like your budget here. You told me one time, it's not static. It's adjustable. Well, I don't wanna look at the total budget anymore of the city for the year. I wanna see quarterly ports, not monthly. Monthly gone into the quarterly ports, so I can see actually a picture over three months.
Okay. And all I'm saying is, that would be an excellent question.
No, my question is this. Do you or don't you do this?
We do not have that capability right now. What I'm saying is, the DCTA is challenged with providing us with that kind of information. They will be here next meeting. That would be a perfect question for them.
Okay, that's fine. Again, as a citizen of Menneson, and I think a lot of people in Menneson are concerned about what is the city taking in? And what is the city putting out on these different projects?
And we do that every single council meeting.
I'm not a, you know, I'm not a fast writer. I'm not going through, what, six? Six council meeting reports and add up all the figures?
It's summarized up. It's a running total. Every time you get this report, you can see exactly where we are at that point.
Fine. Then put it in a quarterly report.
We do that twice a month.
Is that something a technical DCTA can set?
They're trying to do some forecasting and some approve our reporting.
Why do businesses offer quarterly reports? Why do they do that? If I'm a stockholder, I wanna see that quarterly report. I wanna know if my stocks went up. Sure, I can watch it every day, every month, but I wanna see over the long term. First quarter, second quarter, fourth quarter.
Okay. I'm not saying you're wrong or anything. Don't get me wrong.
Linda Lacy, 1624 Maple Avenue. I just wanna make a comment on something you said, Mayor Moser. The CDBG meetings, the reason why nobody comes is because of the time of day those meetings are. Because when they were normal meetings, I would take off work and come. I didn't even see anything in the newspaper for the CDBG meetings. And I think more people would come if it was done around 6:00 o'clock, because people do work.
It was done at 5:30.
Well, I didn't see an advertisement.
It was advertised. We talked about it in the council meetings beforehand.
Was that in the little teeny section in the back of the paper?
We're not taking a full-page ad on it, that's for sure.
It could be like six inches, so people will see it.
Did you put it on the website?
Yes.
Okay, another question. Okay, if the money was allocated for 10th Street, and you're gonna take the money that was allocated for 10th Street and put it to use in Third Street?
If we can figure out a solution for 10th Street.
But my question is, 10th Street's been messed up for a long time.
There's also...
So has Third Street. So now you wanna take... Now you wanna get... Dive into the CDBG money when you could've did it way before, because we didn't start getting CDBG money two years ago. This has been a long process.
And we've been spending it on fixing roads all along.
And the money has not been allocated to where it was supposed to go.
It's allocated according to where people wanted it during our hearings.
Well, if the people don't come to a meeting because they're unaware of it, and I came to several meetings addressing where I think it should go in the city of Menneson.
In August and September is when you need to do that.
But I've done it all year.
August and September.
Okay, where does the Berkheimer money go to?
Goes into the general fund.
Why does it go into the general fund? Why can't you separate that money and use it to pave a road? Because I'm sure there's more than me working that pays that fee.
Yes, there's... The money goes in the general fund. The general fund doesn't have enough money to do it. You take some of that money out, it still doesn't have enough to do it. It has even less.
Well, why don't you just let it stay there until it accumulates enough to do a project?
You're singing Tony's song.
So you mean that that local income tax fee that we pay goes into the general fund, and you use it to wherever you see fit?
We pay the police. We pay the debt service. We pay the retirement. We pay all the infrastructure.
Let me give you a perfect example, and this isn't directed at anybody, but let me give you an example. In the past, many times in the past, for many years, the refuge, when you paid your garbage tax, garbage bill, okay, that went general fund, and it went for whatever it needed to go for. And maybe this month, it was for something the police needed. Maybe next month, it was for something that Marvin needed. Maybe it was something somebody needed. It doesn't matter. It just went, okay? Or it went for payroll, okay? And if you remember, I made a big deal with this council last year that I was adamant, damn it, that I wanted a refuge account, and garbage money goes where it's supposed to, to pay garbage, not anything else. Pay garbage. You with me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Jerry reported tonight, I think it was 360,000 so far is the budget. What's the budget for garbage?
Garbage collected. Your date for the garbage is 409,897 dollars.
What's the budgeted amount for 2023?
That was the budgeted amount.
Okay. We have 362,000 dollars in the refuge, okay? We didn't have that before, because it went to the general fund.
It still might.
I sure as hell hope so.
I hope so, but it still might.
Yeah.
But not to the end of this year yet.
But it's there at least. And the thing is, trying to allocate money where it's supposed to go doesn't always work that way, and that's going on your point of saying, "Well, why doesn't Berkheimer's money go to streets" or something like that. Doesn't always work that way, and as bad as you try to do it, it doesn't always happen.
But see, also, Tony, my point is that we didn't just start getting CDBG money. We've been getting CDBG money for a long time.
We've been spending it on...
And it's not been allocated to where it was supposed to be used for. Now that everything is in disarray now, we're allocating it to places where it's never been before.
When you say that it's going places...
It was... From what I understood from talking to Mr. Hagelin years ago, is that that CDBG money was allocated for low-income areas known as Westgate.
Yes, low-income areas is known as Menneson.
You gotta follow within the guidelines.
Well, now you wanna change it to Menneson.
No, I didn't. That's what he did.
But all the years that you were collecting that money, it was never used over there.
We don't collect that money. The state collects that money. That's federal.
Well, what I'm saying, you direct it where it's supposed to go. You may not divvy it out. Mr. Hagelin does that. But what I'm saying is that where it was supposed to be used was not used for a long, long time. So don't try to sugarcoat that. I'm not trying to be mean, and I'm not trying to PO anybody off. But what I'm saying is that our side of town looks the worst than any part of Menneson. And I, for one, resent that. I don't like that.
I understand.
Thank you.
Nobody else? Somebody make a motion?
Motion. Okay. Honorable Mayor, motion to adjourn tonight's meeting on Thursday, April 13th at 7:58 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?